Commissioners Meeting. This meeting is held in the Jackson County Courthouse Auditorium at 10 South Oakdale in Medford. This meeting is held every Wednesday morning at 9:30 as long as a quorum of two commissioners is available to conduct the business of Jackson County. Your Jackson County Commissioners broadcast this meeting over Rogue Valley Television, and it's available for live streaming and review at JacksonCountyOR.gov. Under the Government tab, under Recorded Meetings, click on RV TV Live Streaming. The types of business that occur at this meeting include public hearings, official voting on actions by the Board of Commissioners, presentations by Departments of the County, and recognition of service that makes our county great. Agendas of the meetings are posted on the Commissioners Bulletin Board and released on the county website and through local media in the time required for public notice. Many of the conclusions on the business presented to the Board of Commissioners have been discussed in detail and prepared by the Administration Office and staff prior to consideration at this meeting and the official vote. These prior discussions also have been properly noticed and the work done in a transparent manner. We encourage you to come and experience the process by attending any of these meetings or watch online at JacksonCountyOR.gov. And now, your Jackson County Commissioners, Dave Dodderer, Colleen Roberts, and Rick Dyer, working for you.
Okay. We will call to order the Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for January 17, 2024. It is 9:30 here in the courthouse auditorium, and we are live via video conference on Zoom. We'll start today's meeting with a pledge allegiance, so if you please stand and repeat after me.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll move into, excuse me, request for and discussion of non-agenda items. We do have a five-minute limit. Pursuant to the codified ordinances of Jackson County, Section 213.06, members of the public may address any item not on the agenda. However, pursuant to ORS 192.640, the Board of Commissioners is prohibited from discussing a principal subject that is not on the agenda. Therefore, the Board of Commissioners will listen to your concerns and may consider the matter you raise by asking staff to follow up on any questions or by placing the matter on the agenda for discussion at a future meeting. So, we do have one signed up today, and that's Sherman Simmons. Come on up, Sherman.
Thank you, Commissioners. I have some general items that I think should concern everyone in the public. Last Wednesday, I attended, went over to the Jackson County Courthouse. I, once in a while, like to stop in and just see what's going on. I was shocked to see the courthouse was not busy. I roamed all over the place, very few people. Ultimately, I did go in and set in on some arraignments. About a dozen people or so were arraigned at the time I was there. And so, interesting stuff. When the arraignments were over, the judge asked me, well, did you have a reason to be here, et cetera? And I announced who I was. I said, I'm Sherman D. Simmons. I'm a CTE business teacher, and I try to get in periodically just to see what's going on in the courts. So, her comment was, well, it's open to the public. I guess anybody's welcome to be here. I've taken students to the courthouse for years. Douglas County, when I taught there, Josephine County, and King County. I've had my students sitting in the jury box at King County Courthouse. I got them police ride-alongs, et cetera. I taught my students to be involved. And it just kind of surprised me. It was kind of the attitude of the judge. We should be encouraging people to monitor our courts and get involved, whether it's politically or in the judiciary as far as the courts and know what's going on with the police in various capacities. So, anyway, that was a surprise to me. So, that was one issue. The other issue I want to bring up, homelessness. We're looking at Medford in Jackson County. I am shocked. When I was born, my dad had built a house over on Jeanette Street by Blackbird. And so, different world in those days. A couple nights ago, I had an opportunity to drive all over Medford, and I was looking at what's going on, Hawthorne Park and all these different areas. What a difference. Now, I'm a guy that's traveled in 20 countries. I lived in Europe three and a half years, ASA, and then worked for National Security, NSA, SPD in Europe at a spy project. And I've traveled in 20 countries. And so, I've seen a lot. But when I saw West Medford, and I live in Samus Valley, so consequently, I don't come to Medford very often, but to see what's going on there with Hawthorne Park, a place that I used to play as a kid, took my son there, and I look around at that bike trail, which was very safe, I am shocked. We have to address this issue. We didn't have it before. There's a cause, and this drug situation, obviously, is a major cause. We have to address this. Anyway, what a difference in Medford. And here's a person, I lived outside of Seattle 12 years, took my students all over Seattle. We walked all over places. I took them by the needle exchange, so the point is, Seattle doesn't even look as bad as Medford, my little town of Medford. So, we need to address this homeless situation and get it cleaned up. The drug problem, let's get with it and do something about it. When I see the courts not busy and I see this kind of thing going on in the streets, I say, why? What are the police doing out there? What's the Sheriff's Department doing? Let's get busy on it. So, that was one of my issues. Another issue is, I brought it up before, and I was on the radio today with Bill Meyer, these large four-wheel-drive vehicles on our streets. When I brought my Carmen Gia back from Europe in 1971, my Carmen Gia had to meet American specs, bumpers, lights, safety glass, et cetera. I couldn't even take the car off the port unless it met that criteria. And so, the point I'm making, Ralph, I said on the radio today, we need to bring Ralph Nader back. This guy, the hot rod man, I'll call him, he said, no, Ralph Nader was a babysitter. Well, I'll tell you, maybe we need a babysitter because these vehicles on the streets right now threaten all of us if we're in a small car. For example, my mother's Honda Accord that I drove down today, one of those vehicles would go right over the roof. And we can't have it. We've got wheels outside, the wheel wells throwing out gravel. They're way jacked up in the air. I'm going to address that with Jeff Golden, by the way, if I go to Ashland tonight. We've got to change the law, get on it, do something about it. So, that's one of my issues. Basically, that's what I have to say, and I would hope the Commissioners would get on board and will start seeing what we can do to look at these issues and make a change. You know, when I look at Medford, my family moved to the east side on Valley View Drive when Dad bought a couple acres up there, built a Roxanne Market by the Grange Hall, et cetera. And so, that was when we left the west side of Medford. But it's night and day now. So, let's see what we can do to change things and have a positive impact. Thank you.
Thank you, Sherman. Has nobody else signed up? Is there anybody online with their Zoom hand?
Mr. Chair, I do not have anyone with their Zoom hand raised to speak.
Okay. And it looks like we do have some coming from the audience here. Come on up. How are you?
Good morning, Joyce Michelangelo, Central Point. And I'm here to speak against the initiative that is being passed around in a petition form where they want to go from three county commissioners to five. Currently, we have three county commissioners, and two of you together make a quorum, and so therefore, there are not back-room dealings. And if we went to five, the back-room dealings could run rampant. Secondly, they are interested in, at some point, being nonpartisan. Nonpartisan does not serve the people. The people need to know where you stand. You either are or are not, whatever party affiliation you've chosen. In the event you choose not to share that information, that should make people wonder what you are hiding. We need people to vote when there are partisan issues, and we have more people voting typically if there are partisan issues as opposed to nonpartisan issues. And so therefore, the more citizens that are involved with the voting is more representative of what the total population is seeking. I want to say thank you for the many ways that the current commissioners are supporting the citizens, all citizens of Jackson County. We have all of you attending various other committees, which is important, that you know what's going on in the different committees within the cities. It's also, we have the issue with wildfires, where our commissioner has gone even to the U.S. level to work on changing the policies within different areas so that there is not the so-called prescribed burn during fire season. During fire season, it should be total suppression. You should not be out starting more fires. As we've seen, oftentimes, when there's a prescribed burn, the wind will pick up, and it will move the fire in a direction that the firefighters were not aware of. We have the issue with helicopters that are there trying to drop water, or they're trying to pick up people, and the wind from the props causes the fire to move. We need to just totally fight fires, and it is for the health of our people, the health of our state. Smoke is not good for individuals, and taking the chance of loss of life and loss of property in a fire is not what we want for our state. Also, the wildfire maps, luckily, with the Commissioner's help, they are revisiting the wildfire maps, trying to use an arson fire to be a reason to cause an area to be put under the area called a wildfire area. Where if a human started a fire, that's not a wildfire. A wildfire is something that is caused by nature, and it's, Jackson County is better for our commissioners fighting for us so that our people can still live in rural areas by changing the rules so that you cannot be insured. That's forcing our rural people who are growing food for us and livestock, whether it's little chickens or big cows, we need the food on our tables. And so, it is good for us to have those wildfire maps to be really getting rid of altogether, but we need to be able to ensure our properties. We need to allow our people to be able to live in rural areas and be the freedom lover, inventing people that Americans are. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joyce. Anyone else in the auditorium wishing to speak today? Okay, seeing none. We'll move on into the consent calendar, which today consists of the minutes of meetings of our Board of Commissioners' regular meeting of December 27, 2023, Board of Commissioners' staff meeting, December 28, 2023, the Board of Commissioners' land use meeting for January 3, 2024, and that was file number 439-23-00001-LRP, and order appointing Commissioner Rick Dyer to the Local Public Safety Coordinating Council and the Jackson County Criminal Justice Oversight Committee. That's order number 10-24. And an order proclaiming January 22, 2024, as Sanctity of Human Life Day and Respect for Life Day. That's order number 1124.
And I will move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
Commissioner Dodderer?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes. Okay. And I will, as we only do, let me find the proclamation we have here. Yes. No, that's not it. Give me one second here. Oh, there it is. Okay. I'd like to read the proclamation. In the matter of proclaiming, so before the Board of Commissioners, State of Oregon, County of Jackson, in the matter of proclaiming January 22, 2024, as Sanctity of Human Life Day and Respect for Life Day, whereas the founders of our country declared that we would hold these truths to be self-evident, that all men were created equal, and they are endowed by their Creator with certain unalienable rights. Among these are life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And whereas to secure these rights, governments are instituted amongst men, deriving their just powers from the consent of the governed. And whereas life is to be protected by the government, and whereas, if life is not protected, one cannot have liberty or pursuit of happiness. And whereas a respect of life shapes the future of our world, our nation, and our legacy. And whereas to maintain the respect for life, one can and should hold it in high regard from conception to natural death. Now therefore, the Board of Commissioners of Jackson County hereby proclaims January 22, 2024, as Sanctity of Human Life Day and Respect for Life Day, dated the 17th day of January 2024 at Medford, Oregon. All right. We'll move into public hearings. First one we have is a public hearing, an order in the matter of annexation of property located at 3953 Kane Creek Road and at 3985 Kane Creek Road, Central Point, to Jackson County Rural Fire District Number Three, or Rural Fire Protection District Number Three, and this is order number 12-24. Ms. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There are two parcels located at 3953 Kane Creek Road and at 3985 Kane Creek Road in Central Point. 100% petition by landowners, a total of 1.12 acres. Pursuant to Oregon revised statute, ORS 198.857, which prescribes the procedure for annexation of property to a district by petition of landowners, the landowners filed a petition with the county on December 21, 2023, requesting the two parcels located at 3953 Kane Creek Road and 3985 Kane Creek Road, Central Point, be annexed. The parcels consist of approximately 1.2 acres and are commonly known as Township 37 South, Range 3 West, Section 02, tax lots 1400 and 1501. ORS 198.857-4 provides that. When determining whether to approve the petition, the county board shall consider the local comprehensive plan for the area and any service agreement executed between a local government and the affected district. County council has reviewed the local comprehensive plan for the area and reported that the annexation of property to fire districts is consistent with the comprehensive plan. Notice that the public hearing was mailed to the petitioner and the Board of the Fire District on January 11, 2024. It is recommended that the public hearing be held. Following the public hearing, should the Board of Commissioners find that the proposed annexation is acceptable, approval of the board order will implement that action, and the effective date of the annexation will be the date of the order.
Any questions?
Nope.
Well, before we open the public hearing, I would like County Council to read the rules, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Here are the rules for the conduct of the public hearing today. Only the chairperson or a member of the Board of Commissioners may question the speaker. There will be no interruption of a speaker from the audience in debates on the floor. Applause is not permitted. The speaker may criticize the proposal, the board, or the agency of the county, but the speaker shall not argue with another speaker directly. Any speaker may present an opposite view, but not in personal terms. A person wishing to speak his or her hand shall sign in or raise his or her Zoom hand and be recognized first by the chairperson conducting the hearing. After being recognized, the speaker shall state his or her name and address first before proceeding with his or her statement. The chairperson may limit the duration of any presentation to the time necessary to cover factual information. Repetition by a speaker shall be avoided. Whoever violates any such rules shall first be warned by the chairperson to assist from such violation. In the event that such person does not so assist, he or she may be ordered by the chairperson to leave the hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And with that, we will open the public hearing. And I don't have a sign-up sheet. Anybody in the auditorium wishing to speak to this matter? Or anyone online?
Mr. Chair, I also do not have anyone with their Zoom hand raised to speak.
Okay. Well, then we will close the public hearing. Take a motion.
I will move to approve order number 12-24.
Second.
Any deliberation?
I'm glad it fits with our local comprehensive plan. Thank you for verifying that and that it's 100% petition. It fits all the boxes for me.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodderer?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes. Thank you. Next public hearing we have is a public hearing, an order in the matter of adopting supplemental budget number one for fiscal year 2023 in 2024. This is order number 13.24. And Ms. Bell, you have a lengthy explanation.
Leave it to the finance person to get this one. All right. So, in accordance with Oregon revised statute 294.473 subsection 1B, notice for the supplemental budget was published in the Rogue River Press on Wednesday, January 10, 2024. This is the first supplemental budget for fiscal year 2023, 20 through 2024. Supplemental budget number one for fiscal year 2023 through 2024 will increase appropriation authority in the airport enterprise, capital projects, central services, general road, motor pool, and recreation enterprise funds as follows. Airport enterprise fund. A transfer from reserves of $705,000 will be used to replace a small portion of the overall HVAC system for the second-floor administrative offices in the amount of $250,000. To replace two fuel tanks located off the end of the snow removal equipment building in the amount of $305,000, and to replace the roof on a 28-year-old building formerly known as the Customs Building in the amount of $150,000. The result of this adjustment will increase operating expenses category by the same amount, $705,000, from $42,857,084 to $43,562,084. The total effect of this adjustment will increase the airport enterprise fund appropriations by $705,000, from $47,378,921 to $48,083,921. In the capital projects fund, an Oregon Department of Administrative Services DAS grant in the amount of $148,068 will be used for improvements to the county-owned historic U.S. Bank Hotel Building in Jacksonville. This adjustment will increase both the operating expenses category and the capital projects fund appropriations by $148,068, from $400,000 to $548,068. In central service funds, interdepartmental charges of $981,353 will be used to pay for multiple projects. They include new fuel tanks for the talent shop in the amount of $484,500, and kitchen and office remodels in the amount of $211,250 at the transition center in Talent. And a transfer from the general fund fiduciary of $202,544 will pay for a new jail pre-designed and inmate elevator control unit along with tuck pointing, phase two of the courthouse. These adjustments will increase the county administration in the facility maintenance program operating expense category by $1,183,897, from $7,894,067 to $9,077,964. The total effect of these adjustments will increase the central service fund appropriations by the same amount, the $1,183,897, from $20,750,396 to $21,934,293. In the general road fund, a portion of the fund balance, $1,649,000, will be used for the talent fuel station replacement in the amount of $525,000. Additional expenses for White City Waterline Project in the amount of $300,000, and equipment, including a water tank, truck flail, two dump trucks, and a utility bed in the amount of $824,000. These were ordered in fiscal year 2022, 2023, but they were not received until fiscal year 2023, 2024. The result of this adjustment will increase the operating expense categories by $1,649,000, from $34,069,396 to $35,718,386. The total effect of this adjustment will increase the general road fund appropriations by the same amount, $1,649,000, from $36,794,386 to $38,443,386. In the motor pool fund, funds transferred from the Health and Human Services operating expense category of $80,389,089 will be used to purchase two new vehicles, and a portion of the fund balance, $347,860, will be used for vehicles ordered in fiscal year 2022, 2023, and received in fiscal year 2023, 2024. The result of these adjustments will increase the operating expense category by $428,249, from $3,829,748 to $4,257,997. The total effect of these adjustments will increase the motor pool fund appropriations by the same amount, $428,249, from $4,015,175 to $4,443,424. In the recreation enterprise fund, revenue from the Oregon State Fire Marshal for $485,600, the city of Phoenix for $120,000, and the city of Talent of $75,000 will fund expenses related to the Bear Creek Greenway Fuel Reduction Project to help mitigate the risk of wildfire. The Bureau of Reclamation, BOR, Title 28 funds in the amount of $800,000, a portion of the fund balance of $450,000, and a transfer from the contingency category of $350,000 will be used for the installation of docks at the Howard Prairie Resort Marina. The result of these adjustments will increase the operating expense category by $228,600, from $5,519,684 to $7,800,284, and reduce the contingency category by $350,000, from $450,000 down to $100,000. Overall, the total effect of these adjustments will increase the recreation enterprise fund appropriations by $1,930,600, from $628,565 to $7,959,165. And supplemental budget number one for the fiscal year 2023, 24 will decrease appropriation authority in the exposition park as follows. In the exposition park fund, to reflect canceled events, the operating expense category will be decreased by $3344,200, from an original $7,618,142 to $4273,942. The total effect of this adjustment will decrease the exposition fund appropriations by the same amount, $3344,200, from an original amount of $8,402,142 to $557,942. It is recommended that the public hearing be held. Following the public hearing, should the Board of Commissioners concur with supplemental budget number one for the fiscal year 2023, 2024, approval of the order will implement that action.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay. I'll have Joel read the rules again for the public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Here are the rules for the conduct of the public hearing as follows. Only the chairperson or a member of the Board of County Commissioners may question the speaker. There will be no room for speaker from the audience and no debates on the floor. Applause is not permitted. A speaker may criticize the proposal, the board, or the agency of the county, but the speaker shall not argue with another speaker directly. Any speaker may present an opposite view, but not in personal terms. A person wishing to speak shall raise his or her Zoom hand or hand or sign in and address and be recognized by the chairperson conducting the hearing. After being recognized, the speaker shall state his or her name and address before proceeding with his or her statement. The chairperson may limit the duration of any presentation to the time necessary to cover factual information. Repetition by the speaker shall be avoided. Whoever violates any such rules shall first be warned by the chairperson to assist from such violation. In the event that such person does not so assist, he or she may be ordered by the chairperson to leave the hearing. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And again, I don't have anybody signed up in the auditorium. Is there anybody online with their Zoom hand up?
Mr. Chair, I do not have anyone with their Zoom hand raised to speak.
Okay, anyone in the...
Oh, Mr. Chair, actually, we do have one individual that just raised their hand.
Excellent. Bring them in, please. There we go.
Okay.
Hello?
I haven't participated before. I didn't know which buttons push.
No problem. You're in now.
Okay. I just wanted to say I appreciate the judicious use of our funds by not just arbitrarily adding money, but you took money when you could from...
Robin, can I just have you stop real quick and give your name and address for the record, too?
Oh, I thought I led with that. I guess I spoke too early. I am Robin Lee, East Medford.
Thank you.
I can be very brief. Thank you for moving money around from one pool to another when you can, instead of just arbitrarily adding more money to the budget. I appreciate the judicious use of our tax money. Thank you.
Thank you, Rob. Anyone else online or in the auditorium that wishes to speak before we close this? Okay, seeing none, we will close the public hearing, and I'll look for it.
I move approval of order number 13-24.
I'll second.
And any deliberation?
I'll just add to that. It is our supplemental budget, is our kind of our verbal accounting record of decisions that have been made and moving the accounts and the money where they need to go, so the public is aware of where the money gets moved to. So it is a real transparent way. So it's a good job of our finance and budgeting team.
And I'll just add that absolutely, these are the kinds of things that you do at the middle of a fiscal year that moves some funding around, and it's all part of that iterative budget process as you implement the budget. So it's well done. Absolutely.
Commissioner Daugherty?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes, thank you. Okay, moving on to discussion and deliberation items. First item there is an order authorizing Jackson County Purchase Order Number 8513 with Presidio Networked Solutions Group, LLC. This is order number 14-24, and Ms. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Rogue Valley International Medford Airport has need of a new video surveillance network storage appliance on airport property. Presidio Networked Solutions Group, LLC, is able to provide the necessary software and hardware. This procurement is exempt from competitive bidding pursuant to local contract review board rules division 1-60E6. Financial impact is $127,368 in expense, and staff does recommend approval of the order.
Thank you. Any questions here?
I'll move approval of order number 14-24.
Second.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Daugherty?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes. Moving on to second item here is an order authorizing a Jackson County Construction Services contract with Adroit Construction Company, Incorporated. This is order number 15-24. Ms. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Members of the board, as the construction manager general contractor, Adroit Construction Company, Inc., otherwise known as Adroit, will provide design and construction services for a new multipurpose pandemic center to be constructed at Jackson County Expo. The contract identifies three phases of the project that include pre-construction services, construction phase services, and warranty phase services. Jackson County Facility Maintenance used a request for proposals, an RFP, process for construction manager general contractor services for this project. Four contractors prepared proposals, including KNO Construction, Anderson Construction, Adroit, and SMB James Construction Management. All four contractors were interviewed and scored by a committee, with Adroit being selected as the best qualified for the project. The primary purpose of the center will be to serve as a hub for aid distribution, vaccination clinics, pandemic response activities, and emergency management, and other response activities that may be needed during and after emergencies. The center will also be used to provide temporary shelter during emergencies, such as wildfire or earthquake evacuations, and also provide space for emergency support services to set up a crisis management point. Additionally, the center will serve as a venue for community events, conferences, sporting events, and other expo-related activities. The term of the contract is upon execution through June 30th, 2026. It is a $25,000 cost for the first phase, pre-construction services. Additional fees using the criteria set forth in the contract will be identified by subsequent early work amendment and a guaranteed maximum price amendment.
Thank you. Any questions?
No.
I will move approval of order number 15-24.
I'll second.
And deliberation on this? It's just, it's a pretty exciting first step to what we anticipate being an excellent facility for emergency response, something the county doesn't have at this point, and an excellent, again, a facility that can be used by the community for so many different things, very versatile, and we're looking forward to this moving on and becoming a reality here for all of Jackson County.
And I would just add, I think one of the things that's really unique about this is this is a partnership with the city of Central Point, and they need a... they plan to use part of this, and I think this is a very fiscally responsible way to build something that both jurisdictions can and the people of those communities can... they'll benefit from. So I think that's good.
And a partnership with the Fair Board.
Yeah. Good point.
Expo as well.
Yep.
Commissioner Daugherty?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes, thank you. Excuse me. Next item on our list is an order authorizing amendment number one to the Personal Services Contract dated January 4th, 2023, with Wayne Scott, M.A., LCSW LLC. This is order number 16-24. Ms. Bell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Wayne Scott, M.A., LCSW LLC currently provides clinical supervision to employees of Jackson County Mental Health, otherwise known as JCMH, who are qualified mental health professionals working towards licensure or may have already been licensed. Jackson County Mental Health's current qualified mental health professionals must be working towards licensure, and Jackson County Mental Health must have professionals who can provide the supervision to employees who are in the same program. At this time, Jackson County Mental Health does not have in-house staff who are licensed clinical social workers, otherwise known as LCSWs, and who are qualified to serve as supervisors for the master of social work, who are working towards licensure. The term of the original contract was January 4th through 2023 through December 31st, 2023. Amendment number one will extend the term from January 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2024, and requires ratification to become effective January 1st, 2024, resulting in the term exceeding 12 months and requiring authorization by the Board of Commissioners. There is no financial impact with this board order.
I will move to approve orders 16-24.
I'll second.
Any deliberation, discussion?
No, but just this is a comment for the general public. I think a lot of times the public doesn't realize that behind the scenes, there's lots of these kinds of requirements that are necessary, and I'm glad to see that our folks are following through on this, using an outside consultant rather than somebody in-house.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Daugherty?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes, thank you. And the last item on our agenda today is an order authorizing a Jackson County contract for services with Aramark, and this is order number 17-24. One last time, Ms. Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Jackson County requires food services for adults in custody lodged at the Jackson County Jail and the Jackson County Community Justice Transition Center, as well as for juveniles located in the Jackson County Community Justice Juvenile Facility. A request for proposals was noticed with the Oregon State Sheriff's Association and posted on the Jackson County's website on April 14th, 2023. Three proposals were received as follows. First contractor is Aramark. For the jail, they proposed $1.63 per meal. For the transition center, $1.63 per meal. And for the juveniles, $3.36 per meal. Summit was the second contractor. They proposed $22.07 per meal. For the transition center, $2.58.09 per meal. And for juvenile, $2.95 per meal. The last contractor was Trinity Service Group. They proposed $1.95.04 per meal for the jail, $1.92.06 per meal for the transition center, and $3.75.09 per meal for the juvenile. Aramark submitted the lowest median price for all three locations, is qualified to perform the work, and should be awarded the contract. This is a continuation of the services currently provided to the county for food services by Aramark. The term of the contract is September 1st, 2023 through August 31st, 2028, and requires ratification to become effective September 1st, 2023. The financial impact is a $1,068,413 not to exceed annual expense amount for the term of the contract.
Thank you. Again, any questions?
And I will move approval of order number 17-24.
I'll second.
Any discussion before we take a vote?
No.
All right.
Commissioner Daugherty?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Dyer?
Yes, thank you. And that does conclude our business, so we are adjourned. Thanks.
We hope that you have enjoyed this week's Jackson County Board of Commissioners meeting. If you have any questions on any part of the show, please feel free to contact your Jackson County Commissioners or staff. You can find their contact information at jacksoncountyor.gov. To review the content of this or any other recent meeting, under the Government tab, under Recorded Meetings, click on RV TV Live Streaming.